And welcome to the September 24th meeting of the Hyde Park zoning board of appeals. We welcome you all. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have minutes from the March 26th meeting, which you all have had a chance to see. I would move for their approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. Let's go on then to the next item on our, is the continued public hearing of hospice, 542 Violet Avenue. Do we have a representative tonight? We don't have a representative tonight. I would move to open the, let's move to open the continued public hearing for hospice. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have, we do not have a formal representative on either side here. I do have some comments here. There have been some discussions on either side, both from the town and from hospice, in terms of coming to some agreement as to the interpretation of engineering numbers to, basically have some agreement as to what the problem is for the management of water on that property and the area around it. That said, this board has been asked to grant a variance to the hospice for adding 21 parking spaces, which are sorely needed to service the customers, the patients and their families who do come there. Unfortunately, we are unable to move until there's some resolution as to the management of water. There is a discussion as to how much or what the impact would be if we added 21 more spaces, whether they're pervious or impervious, but that has not been determined. And this board and certainly this chairman are very, not, what?
Sympathetic to?
We're sympathetic to the needs for hospice to get this done, but I'm extremely upset that the two parties are not able to come together and have some resolution of this. Perhaps an independent third party could bring them together and do this. This has been going on for 90 days at least in terms of interpretation, and that's not the way to serve either the community or the city, and it needs to be done. That said, we have no other alternatives other than to continue the public hearing to October 22nd, and I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's go on. A new public hearing, 33 South Cross Road in Stotzburg. The Hindibrands. Hi. You want to come up here? Let me describe this, and then we will open the public hearing. The applicants are seeking to allow animal husbandry for chickens as close as 93 feet from a residence on another lot where 250 feet is required from a section, and to allow enclosed storage of manure as close as 50 feet to a well and as close as 93 feet to a neighboring residence where 200 feet are required. Madam Secretary, was public hearing a notice given?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on September 17th, 2025.
Okay, then I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hi, welcome again. Good to see you. You want to move that microphone up and introduce yourself for all the recordings?
I'm Brad Hilton-Brenn.
And I'm Palandra Mayo.
Good, welcome. And tell us in your words again, what, why you're seeking this variance from the current requirements.
So we have five chickens. Two of our children are special needs. It's a combination of a type of therapy that we're using for them. With their special needs, they have social and emotional issues, so it has been very soothing for them. It has created a lot of responsibility, growth that we've seen in those two children. One of the two of them is in high school. She is going to the Bosse's program for culinary, and she goes to school out of district, and in her district, they have a community action program. So it's something that she's doing as her after-school activity for, you know, college applications coming up. So a part of it is she also, we also grow a lot of our own vegetables. So a portion of those vegetables and the waste of those plants, we can turn also into food for the chickens. So, you know, we're not breeding chickens. We only have a couple. This isn't a long-term thing. This is for the growth of our children for as long as, you know, the chickens last. And then the chickens do produce eggs that we use for our family. I work locally for an oncology center. I make all the chemo. And we donate a lot of the excess eggs to my patients, and same thing with the excess vegetables that we have. We bring them in. We have a lot of people that donate, and we have like a community table there, and we help provide that.
Okay, okay. We did make a site visit, and thank you very much for hosting that and a chance to see the actual physical site and what was going on. Let me-
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
You mentioned just now-
Go ahead, please.
That it's not long-term.
Yes.
Microphone.
That it's not long-term. Is there like a time that you could put on that?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, our last one is done in high school in six years. So, I mean, that's if those children even wanted to continue this. The one that is currently running the project, she is a junior, so she has a year and a half left, and then hopefully she'll go off to the culinary or Johnson Wills, and she'll be out of here. Um, no, our long-term plan is not this. Our kids are going to graduate. Brad's going to retire as a firefighter, and we're going to go travel, so it's not-
And you're not taking them with you?
We're not taking them with us, no. They've, I think they've even outlived what we expected anyways.
Yeah.
We didn't have, you know, much faith, but the kids, you know, they take really, really good care of them. They're not just outdoor animals. They're their pets. They're out there every day with them for long periods of time. They clean them, feed them, play with them. As you guys saw, our chickens don't even bite. They were raised by four girls who give them a lot of attention. You guys saw the coop is very clean. We have liners in it. It's cleaned out a lot. We, you know, they shower their chickens.
You, I'm not sure that, you may have showed us where you put the manure, but I don't remember.
We literally bag it into a black bag, and it gets taken immediately off the property and goes to an incinerator. We just drop it off. Yeah, it doesn't stay.
Excellent.
April, any thoughts or comments or questions you have, because you also attended?
I did.
Impressions, anything?
None that I wanted to share.
Okay, all right.
I have a question. Do the chickens normally stay within the pen in the coop, or are they allowed to roam the property?
They have, yep. They have a coop with a very small run next to it. They have a door that goes up and down. They're really smart. They go in, they go outside after the sun comes up in the morning. They spend a couple of hours out. They go in and lay between like 10 and 1 o'clock, and then in between laying, they'll go in and out, and then right before sundown every night, they go back in and put themselves to bed.
But that's within the pen itself?
That's within the pen itself. Normally, like, two, two times a week, the kids will take them completely out. They'll spend a little while in the backyard. Like I said, they act more like dogs than they do chickens. They walk around with the kids. Kids put them back in. We've had not a lot of problems with them leaving, not until this happened. And then magically, the only spot of our property that doesn't have a camera on it, the front door to the chicken coop started to open, and the chickens had gotten out twice while we were conveniently away, which our neighbors would know because our camper is gone when we are away.
The area is a little bit bigger than this table area right here?
Yeah.
It's roughly that size.
Yeah, it's roughly the size. It's small, because there's only five of them.
And the fences was about four foot tall, if I remember.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, the kids, the kids will, do they take them out every day?
Not every day. Not every day. At least twice a week. I would say they take them out in the backyard. They run around with them for like 20 minutes, half an hour, put them back in. You know, they like to eat the bugs, especially like after the rain. They like the worms and stuff.
Well, I, we'll say my grandchildren who were there enjoyed petting them and seeing what they were, having not-
I'm not one of his grandchildren.
You're not one of them?
[laughing]
Okay, okay. We've received three, one, two, three, four letters.
Yep.
I don't know if you, have you had a chance to?
Yep, I read them all.
Okay. Any, let me ask you first. Any comments or thoughts about them?
Yeah, I'm actually really concerned by those letters. It said that there was brought up of our rooster. As we told you, we did have a rooster that was not planned. We thought we bought them sexed, and then as soon as we found a home, he left. It was never our intention to have him or keep him.
So, so, yeah, you have no rooster?
Yeah, we have no roosters. So there is a house, two houses down, that has a rooster. That still has a rooster. It's out every day. Nobody has ever complained about that rooster. I'm also concerned because another person had put that they had to come to check on our chickens. That's unauthorized surveillance of my property, which I find to be weird because most of these people I've never met, a couple of people even when we moved in, came up to my front door and said, "I hope we're not going to have any problems with you." I didn't quite understand that. I guess some previous people that had rented or owners did things that the neighbors did not like. The person that made the first complaint is not even our neighbor. The second person actually threatened us because of how they're doing their property and their drainage and us getting water, and it was kind of like, "Let me do my thing, or we're going to go to the town about your chickens." So I find, there was no issues until after the initial, because the chickens were already there previously and previous to the house that was being built. There was no issues until after the first complaint was made by somebody who was not our neighbor.
Now, the rooster is where? The roo-, not your, not your rooster?
The rooster's in a different house, a couple down. So they have, they have some, they have some-
West of the-
West or east?
Towards-
Toward nine?
Towards nine.
Yes, towards nine.
Across the road, or on the same side?
Same side.
Same side.
Same side.
Yeah.
Okay.
And do they have chickens?
They do have chickens and a rooster.
Really? Interesting.
I don't know how many. I've never seen them. I only, I only hear the rooster sometimes, but like, it doesn't, it doesn't bother us, so.
They may still think that that's your rooster, depending, you know, how the sound carries?
Possible.
Possible, but we haven't had one in months. As soon as we found him a home, he was, Zesty was out of there.
Any, any other reactions or questions you have about the letters?
I just find it weird that they say that it's not wanted in our community. When they're on South Cross Road, the amount of farms and farm animals that are at homes is crazy. Like, that's what this town was, was farming. Hyde Park is known for some of their small farms. I mean, Yeti is right up on Falkell.
The-
And we're having five chickens. We're not breeding them. We're not doing anything extra.
One of the letters talked about the possibility of testing your water, testing the wells around there. Is that something that you've thought about or would be willing to do? I mean, there's concern, as we did the site visit, none of the wells are less than 50 feet away from the chicken coop, and we measured that. This, my question is, it was a suggestion by one of, one of the people that sent a letter, is what about testing the water in the wells? Maybe do it now and then maybe do it on some periodic basis. Is that something that you might be interested in doing? Is it address, is, what it does is it addresses?
I don't know what it's going to address. I mean, I have a degree in biology, so I don't know what it is you guys are going to be testing for, what you're looking for, and what you're going to find a difference in.
Well, there's concern, there's concern that the wells, I mean, one of the big things that we're hearing is that the chickens, if you have chickens there, there is the potential for-
Contamination?
I'm sorry?
Contamination?
Conta-, yeah, contaminating the wells. Now, your wells are all, all the wells other than yours are 50 feet away. If that's a concern of theirs, testing the water might answer that.
Well, it would be a baseline anyway.
That was just one neighbor, so.
Ted? Yes?
I believe what you're looking for is coliform contamination?
Yes.
In order to identify the species that the coliform comes from, you have to freeze the sample and send it to someplace in Florida, and it is not inexpensive.
That's what I wanted to know.
It's not-
I just, I just had a training on that this morning.
You send it to Florida, and it's not, it's not, I'm sorry.
It's not inexpensive.
Very costly.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't, I wasn't able to go to the site visit, but I remember a discussion last month. There's a possibility of maybe moving the coop over. Is that, was that discussed at the site visit?
Well, we looked at, on the site visit, we did look at that, and April, you may have some perspective on this. I think we did not, I don't think we identified a place that would make sense to move it on the property. I mean, you could-
I agree with that statement. We did not.
Yeah. I mean, one idea, and I think Rich had that, was to move it to the front, but that would be impractical in terms of, yeah.
It certainly created new issues.
So moving it at this point, we didn't see as an option, moving the location of the pen.
Even if there was a fence there?
I'm sorry?
Even if there was a fence?
It would be like dead smack in the front lawn, probably, to get the, to get the numbers right.
That raises a question of whether the board would want to set a precedent of having chicken coops in a front yard.
Right, right.
You know, it is relevant, I think, for example, if there is another chicken coop in the neighborhood with a rooster. I mean, so in terms of changing the character of the neighborhood.
Just see if there is in fact another, yes.
Yeah.
Do you, do you know where that address is, or?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look it up.
Oh, sure, okay.
There, there is another person west.
On South Cross?
Toward, on South Road toward, toward nine?
Headed towards the high school. Sorry.
Yeah, there's more towards the high school.
And they, there are some chicken coops that are in front yards of people's houses.
Yeah, towards the high school, if you're going that way. That's a lot farther away from us, though.
I'm trying to think where that is. It's, it's west, so it's, it's away from nine or toward nine?
Away from the high schools.
Going towards 9G, going towards Roosevelt High School. So it's the other side of South Cross.
Okay, it's going up the hill and around the curve.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right.
April's point is a good one, though.
Which is?
That there's, close to them, chickens and a rooster.
That we need to, we need to explore.
Yeah, yeah.
The character of the neighborhood.
There was another gentleman in the back that may know where they are.
My name is Ray Milligan. I live on 30 South Cross Road.
Excuse, excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
Do you want to grab a?
Yeah, my name is Ray Milligan. I lived on 30 South Cross Road for about 35, almost close to 40 years. The spot that you're talking about is Mike DeCarlo, and that's west of their house. Mike's got a lot of land there. He's been there for a long time, probably 20 years, or maybe more.
Is he on the same side of the street?
Same side as, yes. That's what they're talking about. But there's a lot more land there. You're talking with him, only half an acre.
Yeah.
I mean, you got a house. And I was there the day you did the site visit, because I was doing the work on a neighbor's yard, one of those are. You got his house, you got Gleason's house, you got Mrs. Ward's house right there, right to the corner. You're only talking from her house where she brings her elderly mother that sit on her back deck, 85 feet, something like that. You know, the variance says in our town laws that there can't be anything on a half an acre land. Everybody on South Cross Road, and I've been there a lot longer than these people have, they have a larger piece of land where it's spread out, where it's not going to hurt anything, where you don't have to worry about wells, water supplies. It's different with them. I mean, I wish they had more land, nobody would even be here. But nobody, everybody's concerned about their wells in there. Every neighbor around us, around them.
So what I hear you say is, I mean, having chickens is not unusual along that road?
No, no. So I don't, you know, if they're permitted, who knows? But they're on like, say, four or five acre lots, something like that.
Right.
Where they're away from their neighbors. I mean, you were there. You seen where the well to Jim's property is very close.
It's 52 feet.
52 feet, yeah.
He's all, he's, and their well, their chicken coop from the neighbor's line is what? What's it, 10? Then you've got Rose Ward, which lives right at the other corner, and that's right in her backyard. Right, I mean, she walks out, it's right there.
I'm trying to remember where she is. Ma'am?
Come up and speak in the microphone, please.
Listen, these are my new neighbors. We're not trying to start anything here.
Are you, are you just moving into the new house?
No, I've been there for 35 years.
Okay, okay.
They, they just moved in next to me.
State your name, please.
I'm sorry, Roseanne Ward. I'm representing my house, which is 31 South Cross, and the estate of Reggie Ward in trust on 28 South Cross Road, which is across the street. Those are the letters I got, so.
You're 28?
I'm 31.
Okay.
My mother-in-law's 28, across the street.
Okay.
I wasn't even really thinking of any well problem when you guys got the chickens. Didn't even know there was going to be a problem with that. I don't know that the well, my well is probably farther away from them. I didn't know that anything could get into my well, but according to what I read from what everybody sent me here, now I'm concerned about it. But my one concern is, and maybe you can help me with this, the wording of husbandry. I looked it up. Chickens, okay. I understand why they want to have them, you know, it helps with their children, but husbandry doesn't just mean chickens. If they get a variance for husbandry, what happens next? Roosters, pigs, goats?
Good question.
No offense, but I don't want to live next to a farm, excuse me?
That's not where we're going.
I know, but this, and that was a big concern. I'm like, well, what does that entail?
Yeah, so the board is empowered to condition this upon being a certain number of chickens. So they could, potentially, if this board chooses to grant a variance, they could say no more than five chickens.
Well, that was a concern for me, because I am very close to their, the property lines.
We can make the limitations, so there's no, no concern.
Yeah, and number, both the number and chickens only and the number.
And what about lifetime?
And I think, yeah.
Yeah, we said that. You can put a cap on it for a couple of years. I mean, this isn't a, this isn't a forever thing for us. We're not trying to open a big farm or do any of that. It's a project for my daughter. She's autistic. She's 16 years old. She has no friends. She loves the chickens. Like, that's all I'm fighting for.
How about with 4H? Wouldn't she like to do 4H?
So, so we try, we're, we're doing the application process for, for H. It's a process around here, and now there's a wait, because everybody's doing these pop-up things. There's a waiting list. She is a part of the American Poultry Association. They do shows and stuff through there, which is what we're trying to do.
Okay, the other thing is, and this was another thing that, but maybe because you're saying you're only keeping it a couple of years, I've been there 35 years. My husband passed away two years ago. Taking care of my elderly mother who lives with me, and my 100-year-old mother-in-law across the street.
Oh, my God.
I don't know that I'm going to stay there forever. So what happens to a property value of a house that lives that close to chickens? It's just something that came up after I got these papers.
Our property value went up $100,000 from the time we got the house till now.
But you didn't have the chickens, okay?
No, I mean, we have now, it's just, we just-
But if somebody came in to buy my house, they may not want to live next, that close to chickens. I don't know.
Well, I, the only problem, and I speak from personal experience, unfortunately, this area is probably the hottest real estate area in the country right now.
True, true, to people that, you know, as long as it's something they want to-
Yeah.
-live next to. I don't have a problem with that. The other thing I wanted to address is the chickens getting out. Okay, they do have them fenced in. I've seen firsthand that they do get out. I'm learning here, because I didn't know chickens went back in the coop at dark, but they do. But I mean, I have even texted them and said, "I know you're not home. Your chickens are out," just to let them know. But I think if the variance goes through, there's got to be a better way to keep them inside.
You could clip that gate, or the door, right?
I can, I can put a second lock on it.
Yeah.
Put a second lock on the front door, yeah.
But again, I didn't know anything about the wells. Now you got me worrying about the well system, because they're so close.
Well, they are doing a phenomenal job with, I mean, I smelled nothing when I-
Oh, no, I haven't smelled anything.
And they're saying that what they do is they clean it up and remove it to an incinerator. I mean, you can't, you can't do any more than that. I mean, it's-
Right, so we're lining, so the coop is lined right now, just so you understand. It's lined with plastic, and then I do hang on top of that. So mostly everything gets caught in the hay. Then, for now, because it's been springtime, all of the extra vegetation, like even when I pull weeds, they eat that. So that's been going into the run. So even if they, they rarely go to the bathroom in the run, because that's like where they like to do dust baths and stuff, they will go on that vegetation, and then we clean that up and take it out.
Yeah, I haven't smelled anything. I mean, granted, I don't-
I mean, it's five. I would think that for the type of levels that you're talking about and that type of stuff, there would have to be like hundreds of chickens going to the bathroom outside all day, all night.
See, I don't know, I don't know anything about that, so.
And then run off from water to spread it to all these places. And then I'm like, well, some of them they wouldn't get to because of how, right, the lay of the land is.
Well, one thought on the, on the wells, and you've had some good discussion on this, and that is-
I think the biggest thing is the wells.
I'm sorry?
The biggest thing is the wells, I think.
Right now, they are compliant with the requirements for the distance of wells from the chicken coop. It's 50 feet, and all the wells, even the new house to the, to the east of their house is more than 50 feet. So the wells, in terms of meeting that requirement, they are doing that, and that's a requirement that's been set by, I think, the state in terms of that.
I thought the wells, well, again, I think my well is on the other side, so.
It's 200 feet from, from a well. 50 feet from a water source. So, because 200 feet from the well.
That's your, that's your water source?
Yeah, it's for manure. That's for unenclosed.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ted.
That's for manure.
Manure storage.
That's for storage of manure, the 200 feet. Right, it's not.
Not for the chickens themselves.
Not for the chickens themselves.
So the, so the, the distance from the wells, they are meeting that compliance, and they don't need a variance for that. They, I think it's more the distance for handling the manure.
Storage of the manure, and they're not storing, they're not storing it.
And the second is, is just general noise, and there's a, several hundred feet for that in terms of what's, and so if the noise is not a problem, then is, is the cleaning up of the manure, and we've seen it in terms of the site visit, they have a, they have a, I think, what would you say, good, good program in terms of cleaning?
Oh, yeah, yeah. The best we've heard at all, everybody-
We've had other situations like this over the last number of years. This is by far the best we've seen, by far.
We're trying. Okay, so again, I'm, I just want to make myself clear.
Yeah.
If they get the variance, there will be, like, however long you say.
Yeah, we saw that.
Yeah, cap on that, that's fine. But also that it would just be for the chickens that they have. No roosters.
No, that would never-
No little pigs.
And no-
No little, whatever else.
Probably-
If you give one person a variance.
Yeah, and that's-
I'm sorry.
Do you give some, one person a variance?
Microphone, please.
For a half acre lot. You give one person a variance for half an acre lot, then you got to give everybody that wants one.
It depends if they're very similarly situated.
I'm worried about my land value, too. So, you know, I've been here 35, almost 40 years, 38 years, something like that. I'm worried about that, too. I don't want everybody on the street having chicken coops.
In theory, our-
That, that close.
In theory, our decisions do not set precedent, and that each, each one is judged by its own individual matters.
I mean, I don't hear, I don't hear them, as long as there's no roosters.
So if they got a variance, it doesn't mean that Joe Schmo next door, what am I- So if they got a variance, it doesn't mean that Joe Schmo next door automatically can get it.
That is correct.
Each one is uniquely evaluated, carefully, like we're doing it now.
And it's evaluated for that particular situation. So if they limit the time and they limit the number, that's, that's the requirement for that, and that, it stops there. It doesn't go to somebody else that comes in for.
Which just made me think of something else. If they got the variance, and then they've sold the house, the variance doesn't stay with that house, does it?
It does.
That's another.
But there'll be a cap.
So, so typically, they do run with the land. It sounds like the applicants are willing to put a timeframe either for the life of the chickens or the life, until you remove them from the property to not return them.
Can we add that word in there too? Like, if we saw an house and the variance goes away, it doesn't transfer to the next owner? I mean, that's fine too.
Yeah, because if we left, they would, if they were still with us, they would come with us, we wouldn't leave them.
So legally, variances do need to be a little more future-thinking than that. They can't be specific to a property, or it's for the property itself. But the board is empowered to put reasonable conditions, and some of those conditions could be that it's for the life of the chickens.
So the life of the, the life of the chickens, uh.
For as long as, well.
Like, like, because I want her to complete the project for college. That would be my goal, because she needs some type of after-school thing. And that's if, and then we have one more that like likes them, so like that one, I was like five, like five years old, maybe?
Yeah, no, five years.
Okay.
I mean, and if they go before that, nobody wants to continue it.
What is a chicken's lifespan these days?
Sarah, you, you did some research.
I believe a well-kept chicken is typically five to ten years lifespan generally.
Right.
Um. But it sounds like, you know, the board could think of some conditions, maybe, that if the chickens are removed prior to their death, that they're, you know, sent to a farm, things like that, that it would then lapse upon that as well. You couldn't return them.
Well, the discussion has been very good, and I think, I, I think this board needs to consider all of these things. And I guess I would ask you also to consider, in terms of time, and some type of testing, even though from the requirements of the well, you're outside of that, I think, you know, people have a concern, and, and, and I understand that, of measuring the quality of the water in some way. And Ted, you say it's for only for, for one inst, for one?
What, what I'm saying is that their septic systems are probably closer to their wells and could also contaminate, and we wouldn't know if it was the chickens or their septic systems, so.
That's an important point, thank you.
I'm like.
Kind of cautious about that.
You may want to consider, you know, what other accommodations you could do either to the makeup of the pen, to make it more secure, things like that. And, you know, send a note to the board about what you come up with, whether it be like a higher fence, things like that.
Yeah, we could, we could probably enclose the top of the fence.
So, I guess all we're asking is, we'd like you to go back and think about these things, give us some reaction, and then we will come back next month and, and
Continue.
and, and consider this in terms of, of how we can move together. I think, I, I really appreciate what you, you two folks have, have said too, because it's been very helpful in terms of.
Public content is very important.
I think we can all, like, you know, maybe a bunch of us neighbors can talk about it, because the last thing I want to do is, if a child has special needs, is to take something away from them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But we, it's just got to be, you know, so that we're all not worried about
Right.
little things.
Yeah, we're not trying to.
Ted, yeah.
So, so while we're in a good discussion, I would like to think about the unthinkable. If a fox gets in and kills all the chickens, would they be allowed to restart the project in the next year and a half, or no?
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, if they get eaten, I'm not looking for a place to monitor.
Okay.
Yeah, the chicken, the, the chicken will, you know, chickens will draw animals, or animals. Whether it's rats, whatever, it'll draw them to them, to the coops, but, you know.
Okay, so, so then, uh.
I would make a motion that we continue the public hearing until October twenty-second.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good.
Thank you, folks, it was really great to see you.
This is very helpful.
One, one, one quick question. What was Reggie's band?
Which one?
When I was, it'd be nineteen seventy, or sixty-eight.
Easy Street days, yeah.
Easy Street, played at Easy Street in the seventies.
Sixty, it would be.
All right, well, sixties is before my time.
I'm talking about Saint, Saint James Church.
The Dirty Elbows. That was a big one.
Okay, they sounded like the Rascals.
Silverbike.
Didn't they sound like the Rascals for a while?
Yeah, probably Silverbike did, but that was kind of before my time.
Oh, yeah.
Silverbike, Easy Street, Outside the Box, Moose.
It's not clicking. There's another one. You're not old enough.
There's, that's right.
That was a hard time.
Good.
It was a lot of fun.
Thank you all, I appreciate it very much.
I miss them.
You guys did a good job, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, our next item here is Sereno, forty-three ninety-one Albany Post Road, seeking a variance to allow a side yard setback of one foot where ten feet is required for the installation of an exterior air conditioner. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I would move to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Better than I deserve.
Oh, good, okay. Just, just refresh us quickly in terms of that issue.
So we're looking to replace a, an old through-the-wall AC unit that failed with a mini-split one-to-one unit on a property on Route nine.
Is that the only place that you, is it, is reasonable to put it?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions from the board. Paul, you must have some questions.
I have no questions for this.
No? No? Anybody?
I was glad, once I realized that the chimney was already there and, and it wasn't impeding anything.
And now, the chimney was a big portion of the reason the aesthetics are going to be better than they are now, because we would, if we put, if we were able to put it in the back, we'd have to wrap that chimney with line set, and it was just, it's going to be an eyesore.
Yeah, yep, yep.
And this will only stick out if at all inches, potentially more than that chimney.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Are there any other, did we receive any public comments?
Uh, no, not on this one.
Not on this one. Are there any other public comments? There being none, I would move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I believe we have a resolution here. Uh, for Mark and Susan Sereno, Sereno, that's a familiar name, I'm not sure. Forty-three ninety-one Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, dated September twenty-fourth, two oh two five, resolution two oh two five dash fifteen Z, whereas the applicant, DS Home Services, on behalf of owners Mark and Susan Sereno, have submitted an application for an area variance to install HVAC mini-splits at the property located at forty-three ninety-one Albany Post Road, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number six oh six five dash sixteen dash eighty-one oh two eight one in the crossroads core zoning district. And where is the project, uh, okay, let's see. Whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from the zoning law, section one oh eight five point one five, to allow side yard setback of one foot where ten feet is the minimum. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section two sixty-seven B of the town law on Hyde Park zoning, section one oh eight dash thirty-three point six B two regarding the requested variance. Requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The proposed HVAC compressor and mini-split will replace an existing and outdated window AC unit. The HVAC compressor will be well-mounted and is comparable to other units on nearby properties in the neighborhood. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible to the applicant to pursue other than the requested area variance. Due to the existing non-conformity location of the building, the existing site, side yard setback is approximately two point five feet where ten feet is required. Therefore, any installation on that side of the building would require an area variance. Three, the requested variance will be numerically substantial. Requested variance is numerically substantial, as it is, will allow a side yard setback of one foot where ten is the minimum permitting a ninety percent reduction. However, the variance is reasonable, given the existing non-conformity of the property and a minimal impact resulting from the proposed installation. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect on the impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. No physical disturbance to the physical or environmental conditions will result from the requested variance. The HVAC unit is wall-mounted and will replace an existing window AC unit. The difficulties are self-created. The property was purchased as in. Be it further resolved, zoning board of appeals hereby grants requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section one oh eight dash thirty-three five F one, the authorized activity must commence with one year, within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked to payment of all fees escrow. It has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Ms. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Donley.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes. Go to it, sir.
There's not another meeting or anything, that's it?
You didn't come back?
Do you want to, do you want to come back next month?
I do, because I want to see how the chickens.
You want to? Pictures or a video?
No, not, not, not for this.
Sure.
No. I have enjoyed these, though.
You want to delay it?
Not at all. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Go install the bloody AC.
No, we've got to get a planning board waiver.
I'm sorry?
Planning board waiver.
That's next?
That's next.
That'll be easy.
Planning. That's kind of what I was, I, I thought, that's next, next month, yeah.
Okay.
Next Wednesday.
You're done with us, though.
No, no.
But you're done with us.
Not next Wednesday, but.
No.
For now.
Oh, sorry.
We have a Jewish holiday on our next Wednesday, so we're not having a meeting.
She'll tell you when.
We'll get it in before summer.
That's good.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Uh, we have a new application, J S A, J A S A L L C, one, two, three, four, Route nine G, Hyde Park. This is, um, just a initial presentation. Good afternoon, evening, it's evening. And your name, please?
My name is Amy R. Girakis.
Amy, nice to see you.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Tell us what, what this is about and what you're doing.
So, yes, I'm with K A R C Planning Consultants, and we represent the applicant, Jasa LLC. And we submitted an area variance application for scale on their behalf. As you said, the project is one, two, three, four, Route nine G, the old drive-in. This property.
I thought we did this already. Didn't we do this already?
Yep, yep, that's, that's exactly where I was going. So, yes, this property was granted on an area variance for scale in March of twenty twenty-two. It was then granted again in March of twenty twenty-three. We did not apply in twenty twenty-four. So we are here now, reapplying for scale, because our, the amended site plan is about to expire in November, but we are going to the planning board meeting for an extension. So we would like them both to be, the both approvals, obviously, to be active concurrently.
Okay.
Um, the pri, the two, the area variances from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, the site plan itself has not changed, nothing has changed on the site plan, but the numbers are slightly different. So the, those two variances were granted for, we were requesting sixty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-one square feet.
That was the form, that was the former one?
Correct, where forty thousand is allowed. We're now currently requesting sixty-four thousand eight forty-nine. It's just a couple thousand less. This is because in the, for the amended site plan approval, the, only the use of the larger building was modified, was changed. It was going to be a, a small office with warehouse space. They eliminated the office, which then reduced some of the other impacts, such as water, the sanitary traffic, and of course, impervious surface, which would be less parking, which is why this square footage was reduced. I think you got that.
So.
So, yes.
All the other buildings are the same?
Ev, correct. The site plan itself has not changed.
So you're the rare occasion where you're coming back and asking for less.
And the same, correct, the same exact, right, variance, only with less square footage, yes.
So, the first variance was forty thousand to what?
Sixty-six nine forty-one.
Okay, and now it's sixty-four.
Sixty-four eight forty-nine, correct.
All right. Yeah, this is, this falls, if I correct, outside of any or inside of any, um, what do I want to say, wetland area. You have wetlands around the, on the property?
Correct, and yes, we've worked for many, probably two years with DEC, taking care of all of those wetlands and making sure that they were all protected and whatnot, yes.
Okay.
That's why, that's why we, we, we have been having to have this project be extended because of the delays with DEC, yeah.
Okay, all right. Questions of the board?
Was some of the, uh, land that the DEC looked at set aside permanently? Is there a permanent?
Our, we received our permits, yes.
Well, not permits, but permanently set as, like an easement?
I think he's asking if there's a conservation easement.
Yes, that, yes, there was, yes, the DEC filed paperwork, we have an encounter and an educational plan on file, yes.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at your one document here, I'm trying to.
In the blue.
Oh, okay, yes. That's your, the three hun, that's the buffer for the adjoining parcels?
I'm trying to determine what that is. I'm, I'm trying to see where your property is. You've come off of nine G, but, um.
Their, their property is the bit yellow, and that's a buffer zone, I think?
Uh, okay.
Or setback, or?
Here's my picture.
You have it there?
Yeah, I can find my picture. Here it is, oh, here it is. Yep, so the one in the yellow?
Okay.
That is, that's our parcel.
That's the internal line, the yellow line?
Correct, that's the driveway, yes.
Okay, and that's the property. The, the outside that is.
These are adjoining.
What is the blue outside?
So the blue, this is, so this was just.
Outside the yellow line?
Yeah, so what we did here was just on parcel access, we just showed what the, all the hundred, all the properties within a hundred feet of the, of our parcel, so that it highlights all the adjoining neighbors, which is the list on the next page.
Okay, I'm not.
And the reason it looks like it goes out so far is because obviously those parcels are, are extending, yeah.
Well, those are parcels that are, that are contiguous to your property.
Correct, yep, all within a hundred and fifty feet of our parcel.
But your property, I'm, I'm looking first at the yellow outline, that's your property, or does your property extend just beyond that, in the?
That's the hundred and fifty feet buffer.
That's the hundred and fifty.
Around that yellow.
Okay, so the hundred and fifty feet is a buffer on your property?
No, no.
Well, the buffer.
Beyond.
Yeah, the adjoining parcels to our property.
And then, anything a hundred and fifty feet around that touches.
Was also highlighted.
Is, is, these got highlighted also, this property line, this property line, and those are other peoples.
So those are the people we would have to notify.
What's the significance of this?
That's, so where this.
It's a hundred and fifty feet.
Where this extends beyond their borders, that's just showing the hundred and fifty feet from their line. So it's indicating that all of these properties touched are.
At a hundred and fifty feet beyond.
Okay, all right.
All right, so that's, that's the notice, that's the notification line.
Okay. All right, I'll understand it. Okay, so you really have reduced the amount of, of, of property that you want included in this. Um, is there any, are there any other changes or modifications at this point?
No, sir.
Okay. Questions?
It sounds like the easiest one we've had in a long time.
Oh, good, oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So does this now have to go to county planning?
Well, what, what we'll need to do is we're going to set up a, a public hearing.
A public hearing, yep, okay.
So next month we'll meet and, and assuming that everything goes well, we should. we should be able to have a resolution at that point as well.
Okay.
Well, you'll, you'll make a motion to refer this to county planning this evening to cut Kathleen loose to make that referral?
Well, let me ask you this. Do we make that referral now?
Sure.
So do you look at the chair agenda? It's on the next page. So, yes. If you look, it's a...
Oh, you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, my goodness, okay.
Next page.
Okay, we're getting there. Lead us by the nose.
So we got to set a public hearing. Okay, we'll do that. And then a motion to refer this. Okay, so we have to do that after we do the...
Correct, yep.
Okay, all right. All right, then. I would move to set a public hearing for October 22nd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I would further move that we refer this project to the county for review per municipal law 239-M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So you'll be back next year, next month.
And may possibly next year.
Sorry, I beg your pardon. You'll be back next month for this.
Yes.
And in the interim, we hope that the county can do this review. Now, Ted, does she have to do something for referral? Do we refer?
Nope.
Public hearing notices and stuff?
I take care of everything. Thank you.
So you, Madam Secretary, you take care of it?
I absolutely do.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you.
All right, so we're on, we're on, we're on several of our, we're hitting on six of our seven.
Not yet.
Oh.
Thank you.
Am I dismissed?
Okay.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you. Have a good night.
See you next month. That was pretty, that was pretty easy.
Yeah, it was. Good thing we got her and her.
So is there, is there any other business before the board? There being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second? I think we should delay for a vote.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Oh, you guys are just a little, um, step...